Hello and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic Beckham Club Study Session for October 1st, 2025. If you're interested in joining our weekly study sessions or our weekly tournaments, send an email to midatlanticvg@gmail.com. Alright, this is where we left off last week. So Eric and I are gonna play the white checkers and this match might be just about over. And if it is, we'll just reboot a brand-new match. And so we're just gonna start off right away with some voting. I'm gonna open the slider with a couple of plays. So it's kind of a desperation position. But even in desperation positions, you have to try to find the best play. You never know what's going to happen. And if anybody wants to, you know, say anything about this play and what you might consider doing, you know, go ahead and chime in. If you have other plays that you are interested in, you can always put it in the chat. I am, by the way, working on my laptop computer today because for reasons that I don't know, my desktop computer did not boot up this morning. And it's not a particularly old computer, so I'm a little concerned. Oh, Eric, I think Jacob's move was fine, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't notice there was a checker on the bar, right?
Okay, so the voting is open unless you have something you wanna add to what's going on. We've got three votes in for slotting the four points, so that's...
I have to agree with Mike slotting the four instead of 2019. Makes sense.
Okay, great. And so all the votes are coming into slots, so let's do that. And, okay. We might end it right here. No? Alright, we'll just rip the two checkers off. Okay. 6-5 to play for the white team, and so now you'll have to give me some candidate plays. You have to make this play assuming that you're gonna get a shot because if you don't get a shot, it's not gonna matter. You could put some candidate plays in the chat. Okay, so Corey says 17 and 16. I've got that in there. Lots of votes in for 22-17, 22-16. Kind of, I guess the idea is to flood the outfield so that if you get a shot, then your objective will be to try to contain that checker. And having a lot of checkers in the outfield can help with that. Okay, we got quite a few votes in now, so we've got six votes and four of them are for flooding the outfield with 16 and 17. Okay, let's do that. This might end it. Yep, that should just about do it. Okay, I won't prolong the agony anymore. We'll just have XG finish this up. I would like to point out some really good PRs in this match. The Hive Mind played under five, which is really fantastic, and the duo, which sometimes was three, was played just a little over two, which is really great. I had a lot of help with some good advice. So some really great results.
Jason, how do you make XG finish the game? Because I've tried finding that option many times and I never found it.
Okay, there is a double green arrow at the bottom. You can't really see right now. I'm only showing the board. But below the board, there are some various buttons that you can put. And there's something that looks like a double green arrow. You can only use that in a non-contact position. So if you hit that, it'll just sort of play it all out for you, you know, when you have a position where there's really nothing left to do and you just wanna finish up real quick.
Okay, I'll have to keep an eye for that arrow then, thank you.
You know what, I can't show it to you now, not just because of... Yeah, it's because I've already done it. But the next time it comes up, if I remember, I'll try to show you. Okay, so the final PR was 466. That's really great. And 208 for the other, for the white team, me and Eric. And there were other people like Bill and Rick, and Bill Spruce was on that for a while. Bill Spruce, you in the house? Bill Spruce is there somewhere.
I'm muted.
Hello, Bill, how are you?
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna start a new match. Let's go ahead and do the same setup. Give me a second here. Okay, 6 and 3. So this is one of these opening rolls that's typically played the same way every time. Very few people will deviate from this.
Who are the teams?
So Eric and I are playing one side, everybody else on the other.
Got it, thank you.
Sure. So I'm just gonna go ahead and make this play. And then Eric and I will decide on the next one. No, we won't. Nothing to decide. I promise you Eric likes this play.
How dare you assume?
Okay, now we got a decision for the red team. Alright, so you can hit me with some candidate plays in the chat. So you got 5-1 to play off the bar. You can feel free to unmute yourself. I just would like everybody to just not stay unmuted, that's all.
I'd go bar 20, 10 to 9.
Bar 20, 6 to 5.
Okay, I got both of those in there.
I'll second slot in the 5-point.
Okay, I've got all those in there now. I'm throwing in some more just in case I can... Okay, so I've got bar 26-5, so I have a couple of slotting plays, including bar 24, 10 to 5. So the advantage of 6 to 5 is it's unstacking that unsightly 6-point. Those checkers need to be put into play. Okay, we can vote. Oh, all the votes are for slotting that 5-point. Okay, good. And let's see what XG says. Oh, look at that, XG likes some other plays. There's a couple of, there's a play we didn't see before, bar 20, 24-23.
Why, in your opinion, Jason, is XG liking the overly safe play, in my opinion? Because to be hit in your home board would strip points. I mean, it doesn't seem to me to be all that risky to slot the 5 and get hits, not the end of the world, but... It's not a big error either, so...
Right. There is another piece of it too, which is advancing to the 23-point serves to freeze the 8-point a little bit. When the 8-point is stripped, you kind of wanna challenge it a little bit.
That makes sense. I've heard that in another video I watched. I was cheating on you. About freezing a stripped point.
Yeah.
So I didn't think about that.
And that's a hard one to see, I think. Okay, alright. Okay, 6-1 for the white team, so that's me and Eric. I definitely wanna hit on the 5-point. I think the question is gonna be what to do with the 6. Eric, where are you?
Bring another checker in the zone perhaps.
13-7? Yeah, that's kind of what I was gonna go for. One of the things that this does is it gives our opponent a good 6, which they don't have right now. So by staying back, we don't give them that good 6, so I like this play. You good with this?
Yes, I suggested it, yes.
Great. Pretty close.
I mean, but it also challenges their 15-blot if they fail to... Yeah, so that it would leave it vulnerable.
Right. Okay. 4-3 off the bar.
I don't think there's any question that we enter on the 21 and make the... Well, now actually, there might be a question. But this might, I mean, we slotted the 5 for a reason. I think we have to make it. So that was gonna be my point, but I do see we can hit on the 20. So I wouldn't know what to do.
So Bill, one of your candidate plays would be come in on the 21-point and play 8 to 5?
Yeah, I mean, again, on the premise that we slotted the 5 for a reason and we got a role we could make it. So I'm finding it hard to believe we shouldn't, although sending a checker all the way back from the 20-point is also an attractive option, but of course it leaves a blot out there still.
Okay, the other thing you wanna think about is not only are you hitting a checker, but you'd be hitting a checker that's slotting a point that we really want to make.
Correct, but you know, anchoring might be an idea too, so that's another thought.
And I put that in there, I put the anchor play, yeah.
Yeah, this is an interesting one, one I would use some clock on.
Yeah, I would too. I think this should not be an automatic play. You should probably think about this one. I think I know what I would do. But this is not an auto-play. There's a lot to be considered here. Okay, we got the voting, the sliders open. And okay, we got a lot of votes for the hitting play, so that's what it's gonna be. I think that is the play that I would make. I would make the hitting play. It removes the slot, hits a checker, and then you now have a checker on a good point so that later if you roll a 2, you'd be able to make the golden point anchor. Note also that 2s don't play well on your side of the board, so you get some diversification here. Now, it's true that there's a lot of return shots.
Yeah, and if we're unfortunate enough to get hit, that's another chance at making that 20-point.
That's exactly right. So when you get hit, you'd be coming in and maybe you can just come in and make that a good anchor. So I feel pretty sure that the Hive Mind has made the right play here. Let's find out. Uh-oh. Not so much. But at least it's close, right?
So you're supposed to come in and make the 5, okay.
So Bill, your first instincts were right.
I was player of the month, you know. So I'll shut up.
Okay. 6-5. Alright.
Bill, wear that crown proudly, baby.
Yeah.
For 20, for 30 days.
Alright, Eric, what do you like here? I'm a little loathe to come down here because that strips the midpoint, particularly when we have an unsplit 24-point. It could be right though. I mean, maybe we wanna bring another checker into the fray. If we didn't already have a spare on the 7-point, that would be a lot more attractive. Okay, then there's a play like this, which is really in your face.
I'd like this one because it really challenges their 15-blot.
Mm-hmm, okay.
If they don't do something about that, they're gonna regret it, so yeah.
Also, that means we're putting checkers into good spots where if they are unable to do something, we may be able to make one of these points. The 20-point or the bar-point anchor are both good defense, really good defensive points.
And it duplicates their ones, so...
Uh-huh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do it. How? Not particularly close. Nice play. Okay, good. Alright, let's roll. Okay, 4-3. Okay, hit me with your candidate plays. You can put them in the chat. Okay, there's a couple of ways to hit. Okay, so I put two different hitting plays in there.
Yeah. Yeah, those aren't right, but thanks.
There's some non-hitting plays as well.
Okay, give me some. What do you like?
Well, there's bar 22, 20 to 16.
Bar 22, 20 to 16, okay.
That was my initial, that's what I saw first, so...
There's bar 22, 10 to 6.
Okay, I got that one in there.
I'm not, I have no idea which one's right, but I'm just saying.
Yeah. Bar 21, 13, 10, Jacob put in the chat. I've got that in the slider also.
So I'm not trying to monopolize conversation, so I'm just trying to get my thought process, a thought process for us together here, right? We're 15 behind and we have to come in off the bar. My initial thought, looking at the position, was not to leave three blots in your home board against nine checkers with plenty of spares coming down on us. So that was why my first part of the roll, I think it's gotta be right to make the 22-point. I can't see how that's terribly wrong. Would that leaves the 4 to play? 10-6 makes it safe, but 20-16 and trying to escape a checker sure seems... But I bet 10-6 is right.
If you have any...
If making the board, if making the anchor is correct, 10-6 has to be correct, I think.
Yeah, Bill, do we have any concern? I mean, part of the fear here is that we get double-hit, right? That if we either hit on the 5, if we hit on the 5, there's a real chance we can get double-hit.
Yeah, if he rolls double-3s, we'll be sorry as can be.
Right.
With a 3, yeah, anyway, sorry. Make the point 10-6. Yeah.
Alright, well, the slider's open, we can vote. This is a tough play. I think I know what I would do.
It is not easy.
Yeah.
But I'm picking this one.
Oh, the voting is tied right now. Three different plays have received votes. Steven says, "Who says Beckham is easy?" I say it's easy when I get the problems right.
Yes.
Okay, oh, it looks like there was a change in a vote, so now we're gonna go with bar 22, 10-6, looks like a play. This is not what I would have voted for. I would have voted to hit on the 7-point. Let's see if I'm right.
Would have done either that or make the 10.
Both of which are close. Okay, 10-6 is a whopper.
Really? Yeah.
I think it's a little bit too passive.
Yeah, that's probably what it is.
Yeah, tough play though.
What was coming out? Coming out was a bigger one.
Coming out? Yeah, coming out's here. Alright. Double 2s for the white team.
The no-hitting play was the right thing, though.
Yeah, 13 to 10. I would have voted for 10 to 7, which was real close.
And we would have 2 on the bar right now had we made the XG's play.
Okay, Eric, we have ducks to play.
I would say knock him off the 5.
Yeah.
Make the 18 with another.
Why do they call it ducks for 2-2? That's a Paul McGrealism.
So we got 1-2 left, yeah?
Yeah.
But I guess we safety our 7-point.
Okay, I wanna offer a completely different move. Well, not completely different. It starts the same, and then I wanna make the 4-point.
Oh, yeah, that's even better. Yeah, I prefer that, yeah.
Great. I thought I was gonna have to talk you into it, so we'll do this?
Yeah, sure.
Ah, yes. Wow, every other play, double whopper. I'm glad I talked you into this.
It didn't seem too hard to talk him into it.
Yeah.
I have discovered as a general principle in reviewing my own mistakes that not making, like on a double-roll like this where you can make two inner-board points, especially if you can hit, that's almost always the right play.
Yeah, we're making the rack. Put him on the bar and make the rack is a good play. Okay, and Eric and I might have a cube coming up here. That might save it, we'll see. And there's two ways to hit, if you wanna hit.
Oh, I think we have to now. And you still might have a double from the bar.
No comment.
Bill, how are you thinking from hitting? 6-5 or 8-5 or 8-7?
I think, I don't know, after my last blunder, I don't know.
I wanna hear your thinking, though. What are you thinking?
Bar 22, I hit on the 7.
8 versus coming on the 24 and hitting... I mean, I think we gotta hit the 5, don't we? Not the 7?
I don't wanna leave that many directs. I don't know, it might be right.
Are we now, well, let's talk about what type of game are we playing? I mean, are we now playing a back game or are we still trying to play? I mean, I don't know what, I think the only game we're playing right now is a back game. We're not priming, we're not racing. So I think we have to go back as far as we can, so I would go back to the 20, come in on the 24 and hit 8 to 5 maybe. And wanna get hit.
You might be right.
Our timing isn't horrible for a back game, and we have no inner-board points. I mean, so I'm thinking bar 24, 8 to 5.
Adams talked me into it.
Oh, don't, no, please don't do that, but I'd love to hear some other thoughts from people. And maybe I have, and maybe my logic is flawed, or not maybe.
I vote for it.
Hate back games. You get gammoned too much.
Well, what other game can we be playing, though? I mean, it's kind of the game we've been dealt or rolled.
Well, you got a butterfly point, make that, stay on that point.
Butterfly point, I don't know what that means, I'm sorry.
That's a 3-point. It's not deep, it's not shallow. It's not an advanced one, it's not a deep one. It's in-between. You seldom get gammoned from that position. I think you start playing a back game, you're gonna get gammoned.
So coming on the 22 and hit 6 to 5 or 8 to 7?
I would go 8 to 7.
That was my initial thought. Adams kind of got me around to maybe coming on a 24.
I have no idea, I'm just throwing...
I think 6-5 is a much better hit.
6-5, I'd go, if I'm gonna go 22...
It's more direct shots.
Alright, let's go ahead and vote then.
This is another, thanks for all the great rules, Jason, by the way. These are awesome.
You're welcome, yeah. In case you're wondering, yes, it is rigged. Of course it is. Oh, we got another tie. Voting is open, let's do the voting. Okay, the voting is very close. It looks like 6 to 5 has come out on top. Alright, let's go and do that. That seems like a robust-looking play. Alright, now Eric and I have the, we have the floor, and Eric, I kinda like to double this.
Yes, of course.
Do we have to wait till you double to see if which roll we made was, which move we made was correct?
Yes, I would like to wait because of seeing that information can affect the cube decision. We'll go back and look at it.
Okay, thank you, Jason.
Yep, sure. Okay, so Eric and I are going to double, and we will not look at the previous XG analysis until after we resolve the cube, but we will go look at it.
This feels like a pretty easy pass for me.
I drop.
I haven't drank enough to take this one today.
The only one who might take it is Tom Jane, I think.
And me, and me, 4 beers in, this looks an easy game I could turn around.
Is this a 4-beer take or a 3-beer take?
Yeah, it could be, it's one of the other.
I played somebody in Chicago. I won't name any names, but I played somebody in Chicago late at night. I think he pounded about 6 beers during the match. He had a cooler sitting next to him.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, let's not name names.
We won't, but he's a great guy.
Don't throw Tom under the bus like that.
Yeah, I didn't specifically name Tom, but anyway, this guy, he would just reach out, he'd just pop another one, and he would just keep right on going. You know what? I outplayed this guy, but not by much. And all I can think of is this guy very, almost outplayed me, and I'm stone-cold sober, and he's 3 sheets to the wind. It was brutal.
I've seen him at many tournaments. He is a great guy, and he plays incredibly well for someone who by the time he's playing side events late at night is a little bit snobbard.
A little bit, yeah. Alright, looks like the votes are to pass. Not enough drinkers in the room. Okay, so let's pass and take a peek. Wow. Easy take. How do you like them apples?
Where's it, it says, I thought the checkmark is double-pass.
Checkmark is what play you actually made. The XG symbol is the best play, the double-take.
Is it a no-double?
No, it's a double. It's a cube. So you see at the bottom where it says best choice, double-take.
Okay.
So the white team made the right play, and the red team did not.
I just figured we were gonna have a fourth checker back behind what was shortly gonna be a... I just figured we were gonna have a fourth checker back behind what was shortly gonna be a five prime.
Yeah, I I see what you see. Okay, back to the previous checker play, hitting on the five point was right by quite a lot. So here's, here's the previous play that led up to that. So you all made a a good play here. But if you're gonna pass the cube, I freely admit, this is, this is a really tough, uh, cube to, uh. To take.
Is it a take because we're, our our timing is so good?
Uh, well, your timing is actually not good, what's. You have to think about it a different way, the the race is close, you know, you've got a decent anchor, also, we're on the bar. So, uh, there's, you know, potential for a little bit of awkwardness, maybe you can hit this checker out here. Um, there's a, there's a lot of reasons. But th- these are, these are really tough. Uh, Bill asks, is it a take in a five-point match? Um, yeah, it probably is. Uh, I I I. I might, I might be passing this too, so I think this is, this is really tough. Okay, next game. Okay, five-four.
Uh, Jason, I just joined, whose team would I be on?
You're on the red, you're on the red team.
Okay.
Also, Jed, the last couple of weeks, you've had a smoke alarm going off in your background. And the, uh, MABC leadership team would like you to repair that.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, Eric, five-four to play.
Well, standard opening.
You like to, you like to split?
Yes.
Okay, great. Three-one, so you you guys wanna.
Why did you talk me into doing that? That was horrible.
Is this your play? Or or would you?
We wanna do it from the eight, yeah, we wanna do it from the eight, exactly.
Wanna do it from the eight, yeah, okay, alright, alright, you can make the five point, there you go. Oh, three-one, that's not so hot. So. I'd like to go for the advanced anchor. Since they've made an inner board point, we are kind of in need of an anchor. Um, this doesn't feel that dangerous, cuz they only have eight checkers in the zone, they're unsplit in the back. Eric, how say you? I don't wanna slot because we're outboarded, right? I don't wanna do this.
And, uh, the, I I would like to do thirteen-ten, but there, we paid the price by by making the twenty-four again, which I don't wanna do, so you're.
Yeah, we 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 were just there.
Yeah, no, let's let's slot twenty-one.
Okay, let's do it. Okay, let's. Let's see what XG says, uh, oh, do it the other way, alright. I never know with these, right, which way I'm supposed to jiggle these checkers around.
Oh, yeah, um, even Dirk Schiman said this exact same thing, I never know it with these, so don't worry, nobody knows it with these.
If Dirk Schiman doesn't know, then what chance do I have, right?
Yeah.
Oh, that makes me feel much better. This could also be another one of these cases where, you know, they have a stripped eight point, so advancing to the twenty-three point. Helps to challenge that point. I don't know. Okay.
And, um, uh. There there was another commentator within, a re- a really like traditional commentator, I forget his name right now, but he said the same thing, nobody knows. Like, he told Dirk, Dirk, nobody knows this, these plays, so, yeah.
Get hit twice.
Maybe a double hit, yeah, eight-four, four-one.
I'm sorry, eight-four and what?
Hit twice.
Then four-one.
Hit, hit and run, okay.
Hit twice. Hitting two men with from the eight point.
Okay, got it. Um, any other plays that we should consider?
Uh, you could, I mean, it's probably not right, you could break her eight point and come down with their, or split, some of that.
Uh, so like thirteen to ten?
I think that hitting, I think you have to hit here. Oh, no, yeah, you have to hit, so I think that their play is right to double hit, yeah.
Twenty-one, eight-four, okay, I've got a couple of those in.
So, Jason, sorry, but going back to ideas, right?
Yeah.
Not, it's not right to let your opponent live on your five point, and now it's not right to let you live on our four point.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
So hitting's correct, so that part of it's easy. Where does the three then come from? Doesn't make any sense, if we're gonna hit on the four point, you may as well hit twice, cuz we're gonna have a blot anyway. Uh.
Uh. All this, but like, that kind of the advantage to it is like, if we hit once.
Jed, there's your, there's your smoke detector alarm going off.
I, do I have one? I don't know if that's.
Absolutely have one, Jed, it's been three weeks in a row. Um, gonna have to ask you to. You you, I think you can't participate with, uh, with this if your thing's going off, it's actually really jarring on this, on this Zoom call.
So. I I think the hits mandatory, that leaves a three to consider.
Okay, so one way to think about it, Bill, is maybe you wanna stay there because that's a good point to make. So, for example, a lot of times when you roll a four-one, and your opponent has split to the twenty-three point, you hit on the two point, and you keep going to the one point. And the reason you do that is because you say, well, my checker's on the two point, that's a lousy place to be, I might as well just keep going. Whereas if you're gonna hit on the four point, you might be thinking, you know what, I like being on the four point, because if I can make that point, woo-hoo, that's great.
I'm aggressive.
So that's an argument for thirteen to ten with a three.
But that only puts one. I'm not saying it's wrong to do a double hit.
You could also split the back, right?
Yeah, you're right, you could also split the back.
Cuz I I'd feel better, if I was gonna keep it on the four, I'd feel better about splitting the back than about bringing another checker down.
Agreed. Otherwise, uh, you got three blots in your outer board. Well, three blots counting your outer board, if you hit that way, it would bring a three down from the midpoint.
Yeah, you're also putting a checker on the bar, and that's kind of an important.
Only one, if you put two up, I think you're safer.
Yeah, so I I'm not here to say that the double hit is wrong, because you're also, you have a better board, and that makes a, that makes a big. That makes a big deal. It's a, the double hit is actually more attractive when you have a better board. I'm just saying as a general principle, a lot of times, so I'm I'm just, I'm giving a general principle here, that when you hit on a point. The decision as to whether or not to keep going and hit another checker, sometimes has to do with how good is that point that you've landed on, uh, first. Uh, so, uh, Michi in his opening concepts books talks about, uh, uh, weak tiger versus strong tiger. Um, uh. You know, hitting two checkers is the tiger play, uh, you'd like, if possible, you'd like to have to leave a blot on a good point. So when you hit on the four point and keep going to the ace point, uh, Michi calls that a weak tiger play. That's, that doesn't mean.
I understand that, but.
Right, it doesn't mean it's wrong.
Yeah, cuz it, uh, any point in a blitz is good.
That's right, that's right.
And and also, there's still plenty of ammo to make the four point with your checkers that exist on the eight and six. And thirteen.
Yeah. Okay, so, uh, the slider is open, we can, uh, we can vote. And looks like a lot of votes have come in for the double hit. And, uh, yeah, I I don't wanna say that I was discouraging the double hit, I was just sort of talking about a general principle. Um, okay, so it looks like that's gonna be the play, and. Look at this, it's all really close. Yeah, it's kinda cool when they're all really close like that, um, but, uh, one thing that that. Uh, Bill Spruce pointed out is that the hitting on the four point is mandatory. Um, it's important to fight for the, for that point and to get your opponent off that point, so.
Yeah, just, I just mentioned it because that, I don't know if my thought process is better or worse or helpful to anyone, but I mean, that's. To me, the first part of the role, what do I have to, I had to hit on the four point, so I'm not sure dreams was right, but. Yeah.
Um, okay. And I I probably would have followed my principle of staying on the four point, I think I would have made this play. Um, I I'm I'm not here to claim smug equity, I'm just here to say that that's the principle I try to follow is, I wanna keep. A checker on a good point. There are some real downsides to eight-four thirteen-ten. Mainly being all these blots that are hanging around that you're gonna have to clean up.
Where, where is eight-four, twenty-four, twenty-one?
Down here. Kind of a medium-sized error.
Okay.
It's not terrible, I mean, it 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 accomplishes some good things, so, uh. I think it's just that it's not urgent that splitting in the back. You know, we have, we have no offensive structure on our side, on the white side, so you 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 don't have an urgency to split in the back. Okay. Maybe better throw a a cube vote in here, huh? Why not?
Yes, please, that's, I'm worth, it's worth a thought.
For us?
Sure.
Oh, no, it's way too soon for that, I think.
Why is it too soon, Bill?
Uh, so, I, you know, we have two checkers.
Only eight in the zone.
We got two checkers on the twenty-four. We've got a blot in our home board, he could easily hit on his way in here, um, I mean, we could cover it as well, I mean, I know we have, we don't. Do we have any, let let's think of it this way, Jason, you're gonna need to help me, cuz I'm I'm weak here. Do we have any market losers? Uh, double five, double three.
Yeah, maybe double threes. Five-three and a dance might be a market loser.
Yeah, I'm okay with losing the market and just taking the point and going home.
Me too.
But I wouldn't double here, I would not double here.
What's the first question that you have to ask? When you're considering a cube?
Match score.
Before that. I mean, that's part of it, but I I I think there's a really important question you always have to a- ask.
What does winning attorney not want me to do?
Um.
Is it too good?
Our winning chances, what are our winning chances?
What would Jason do? No. What? What I'm getting at is, I think you should ask the question, is your opponent going to take this cube?
Well, that answers yes, I think by far.
Okay, so because wh- what I'm trying to apply Wolsey's Law. Which is, if you put yourself in your opponent's shoes and you're not sure what they should do, then you should, you should just cube. If you are sure what they're doing, going to do, that might change your mind. Um, in this case. I would, I would hope that you would, everyone would see that this is an easy take for white.
Yes.
And so you can't use Wolsey's Law. You have to, you have to take some other approach.
What did you say after you said, it's it's since it's an easy take, what did you just say?
It means you cannot apply Wolsey's Law. Wolsey's Law says, if you're not sure what your opponent is going to do, then you should double. Here, you should be saying, I'm sure what my opponent is gonna do, they're definitely going to take, so now you gotta, you gotta take a different approach.
I see.
Let's see, what what's the slider going right now? All votes for no double, if you haven't voted, you can, you can do it. And I I think. I think no double is the right play, I I, you know. Bill Spruce articulated it pretty well, it it's just not quite enough there, there's not enough market losers. You know, if you roll double fives or double threes, maybe five-three followed by a dance, it might be, uh, that might lose a market, that's not enough. Uh, there's another ru- rule, uh, O'Hagan's Law, you need nine, uh, market losers. In general, and this is a, a rule of thumb, um. But.
How the hell do you keep all these rules in your head, Jason?
I don't know, I read a lot of backgammon. I I forget a bunch of stuff, too. Alright, so the vote is definitely no double. Alright.
I agree, even though I suggested we could think about it, I agree, it's it's ridiculous to now send a cube, I I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah.
It was worth, it was worth a look, anyway.
I think it's absolutely worth a look, uh, to consider a cube. Um, and I think if you're playing this over the board and you don't pause in this position, I think you've made a mistake, because you you have to be. Ready, uh, to turn the cube. Okay, uh, six-five for the red team.
I think you covered the one, and you're twenty-four eighteen.
Okay. So, since Adam was asking about how do I remember all these rules of thumb, here's another rule of thumb, once you've. Put a checker on the eight ace point, there's a rule of thumb that says you kinda have to cover it early in the game. That one doesn't have a name.
We'll call it the Jake rule, we'll call it.
Definitely not my rule.
Um, so, Jason, though. Uh, in the discard of backgammon, someone asked like, what are moves that are, they're, are always, almost always correct, that you almost, al- almost always have to make? And, uh, I, one of my suggestions was to cover the ace point after you put a checker there. But, uh, they proved me wrong, there are many, many exceptions for that.
There are many exceptions.
Yeah.
Eric, would you like a backgammon rule that is an absolute? And 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 it's a real rule, something that you can apply over the board, I'll give you one.
Uh, which, which is make, make the five with a three-one in the opening at any score whatsoever.
No, the the rule of thumb, here's a, here's a, here's a good rule of thumb, when you're in a bear-off, and it's, it's just a race, there's no contact. And if you roll a one, and you have a checker on the ace point, you should always bear that checker off, and there are no exceptions.
Yeah, I remember.
Oh, maybe there's some gaps that I can smooth my distribution, it turns out the answer is no, you should always just bear a checker off.
Yeah, and if you can bear off two checkers with your two dice, then you should always do so as well.
That is not always true, it's true most of the time, the rule I'm giving you is just with, uh, uh, ones in the bear-off. That one happens to be always true.
When did we ever get to a bear-off around here, my god?
No, we don't do bear-offs around here.
Um, are there other suggestions for this move, other than?
I don't know, uh, down from the thirteen, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, there was thirteen-eight, thirteen-seven, that's. Okay, was there another one that I missed? Uh, cover, oh, covering down, okay, yeah, thirteen-seven, six to one, okay, I've got both of those in there now. And by the way, we're gonna make this the last play, um, I I've told Wes and Tom. And Bill and Janet, who are running the tournaments, that I I wanna finish by ten of, and we're, uh, we're pushing that now, so this is gonna be our last play in the, in the studies.
How about running from the twenty-four?
Alrighty, running from the twenty-four, there we go, thank you, Joe. Okay, the slider is open. You should consider all of these that we've now added in there. Okay, we got a variety of plays that got bolts. Okay, looks like twenty-four eighteen, six to one has one, and I like this play, I think it's a good balance. Uh, this is the play I would make over the board. I am cognizant of this heavy midpoint, uh, but I think this splitting play does a lot. Okay, we're gonna stop here, let's take a look. And I would have gotten this wrong, how do you like that, apples? I guess that heavy midpoint is, it's kind of a big deal, and must be that we're, you know, you're, you're in a blitz.
It it seemed a little rich to me, Jason, that's why I didn't think it was right, it leaves a lot of returns.
Well, that's why you're the player of the month.
Well, I would have been wrong, just like you.
Okay, we're gonna stop here, I'm gonna stop the recording, so just a moment here.